The July 15, 2024, Auburn City Council Workshop would be called a session. First item on the agenda is evaluation and mill rate discussion by the assessing department.
Thank you, Mia Harmon. Good evening, council members. We are here tonight. Joe St. Peter, Deputy Assessor, and our staff appraiser, Ozzy, is in the audience as well. We are here tonight with extremely exciting news. We have, on the assessor's calendar, it starts the day after the commitment of taxes, and it goes until the next year when you commit taxes again, and today is that day. Today, we sent the tax rolls over to the tax collector. July 15 is the official date of the tax commitment, and that makes us extremely excited. This is, I know, it's assessor stuff. Sorry.
I'm a dating geek, I get it.
July 15 is the earliest I can remember, and I've done, this is my 23rd commitment. It's the earliest I remember ever committing taxes. So, huge kudos go out to Joe and Ozzy. They really put in a lot of hard work to get us where we are today, and I thank them very much for that. Okay, so, we, we, as agents of the state, let's start with that. This is just, oh, you can go back to that data. This is data that we're going to talk about tonight. The commitment date that I was so excited about. Obviously, the commitment date is as of April 1. That's when we set our valuations. So, as of April 1, we're going to discuss the declared ratio, we're going to discuss the mill rate, and we're going to discuss the homestead exemption and how it affected, why we did what we did in making valuation adjustments this year. So, we are responsible for equitable assessments. We've talked about that over and over and over. Equity is what we do and what we're bound to do as agents of the state. So, this year, once again, we did have to make valuation adjustments to maintain equity between the classes, and we're going to talk about that more in a minute. We have continued to see increases in sale prices. We do not see them dropping. We'll wait and see. Obviously, we'll continue to track them, but because we have not seen them dropping, and they are continuing to either maintain or rise for most classes of properties, we have done our best to keep up with that. So, we'll talk about that certified ratio. And I guess we should do that right now. Why don't you talk about the certified ratio? Would you like to do that? And the numbers?
Sure. Okay, let's get into the numbers. So, we've been especially committed to keeping up with market increases. The consequence of not doing so is that we lose a tremendous amount of valuation in the valuation base. This year, we gained $26 million from new valuation compared to 2023. This is from things like new construction, you know, parcel edits, changes, you know, things that are, that are normal. This is a net, of course, because we also lose valuation from demos and things like that. So, we gained $26 million in new valuation. We gained a net $200 million because of the market adjustments, and that doesn't even bring us to 100%. By making these adjustments, we preserve things like our property exemptions, and we avoid significant losses. Had we done nothing at all, we could have stood to lose $260 million in valuation. This is a kind of a simple slide, but there's a lot going on here. If we're looking at a $250,000 home, and we had decided not to make any adjustments whatsoever, that assessed value would have been $250,000 to begin with. The homestead would have been $17,750 because we had to ratio, because we have to adjust our homestead by the ratio and other exemptions by, by the ratio that we declare. 71% was the recommended ratio by the state after they had analyzed our sales. So, that gives us an adjusted value of 232,000. That would give us a mill rate of 24.64 because the mill rate would have to go up because the valuation base went down. We declare a ratio of 71%, and you have a tax of $5,722 on that $250,000 home. This year, we decided to make market adjustments to certain property classes, multifamily, single families, vacant lots, mixed-use residential were some of the, the classes that we adjusted. That gives us, there was basically on, on many properties is around a 12% increase in value, so that $250,000 value goes to $280,000. The homestead stays at $23,250 because we declare at 93%. The full value of a homestead is, at 100% is $25,000. That's actually more ideal, but we're, you know, we're just trying to keep our head above water here, giving us an adjusted value of 256,750. But we can drop the mill rate because we've increased the value at a 93% ratio, so the tax is $5,712. And that actually, compared to doing nothing at all, saves us 9.95, $9.95. So, it's somewhat equal, if you think about it. Kind of the bottom line here is that no matter what we did, the tax, taxes go up, but the best solution in our mind was to make those adjustments because not only are we basically staying equal, but we're also improving equity issues.
So, basically, that was the message that we wanted to provide you tonight, because I am sure that when the tax bills go out and the taxpayers receive their tax bill, there are going to be questions about why their valuation increased. Obviously, it will be different for different taxpayers based on their valuation. Higher valuations are going to see a higher increase in their taxes. So, we are obviously happy to answer any questions from the taxpayers, and we encourage you to just point them to our department, and we will set up a meeting, or we'll talk to them on the phone, or however they'd like to converse, and we will answer all of their questions to the best of our ability. Now, the last thing that we would like to let you know is that, I'm sure you knew the bid went out for the revaluation. We got four appraisal companies who bid on the revale, which we thought was a very good showing for the revale. And the, a group of us reviewed all of the proposals, and we chose KRT based on their experience in Maine. And we personally know some of them, and we know their work. And we did have a scoring paper, a scoring that we all did, that Joe and I did, so that we could go through it and compare apples to apples. So, KRT has been chosen, and as soon as a contract is signed, then we can go ahead and have discussions with them on how we would like to go about getting this information out to the public, public meetings, so that they know what to expect, what's coming, what is a revaluation, what's going to happen during the revaluation, where are we going to end up? We'll do the best to kind of predict. Obviously, we can't. It's a future thing, but we, again, we'll do our best. And so, we wanted to let you know that's where we stand with the revaluation.
Questions from the council? Yeah, Council Platte.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. This info's probably come across our brains at one point, but what's the full value of the tax base in 2023? I'm curious what, if there was a $200 million increase in valuation, not new, not new value, I'm curious what percentage increase that was to last year's tax base, property tax base?
I actually didn't bring last year's. I mean, the number is, you know, a straight change from the, so if we, the 227, hold on.
Basically, I'm curious, what, 200 million divided by our total tax base is? I want to know the percentage increase in valuation as a, as a overarching number?
So, the typical property that was adjusted, it was about, it was about 12% to, to the, to the properties. Because not all properties were adjusted, and I had run this number before, it was like a 9% increase overall to, to the entire tax base.
And I'm asking that just so when we get the question, I can say to someone, it was approximately 9% or approximately 10%.
We, we can prepare an exhibit in, in that regard and send it out if you'd like.
That'd be helpful.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Council Milk?
So, if we had not done an adjustment, what was the loss of revenue from the state?
From the state?
Right.
Well, I mean, it's, it's what we take off the top, basically, from, from ratioing. So, at 71%, we lose 181 million in real estate. We lose 25 million in personal property.
So, the revenue coming back, I'm sorry. The reimbursement from the state is what you're asking about? We'd have to have?
What's, what's the downside of not revaluing? So, leaving it at 71%?
Okay, so, the reimbursements coming back for the homestead, the bedding exemption, and some of the tree growth would all have to be ratioed down. The state would only give us a certain reimbursement based on that 71% as opposed to the 93%. Dollar-wise, I don't have that figure, but it's, for bedding alone, it's amazingly substantial.
I don't, I'm not sure, what, is there a ballpark number? I can't value, I don't know what amazingly substantial money is.
I don't, I'd have to work with Kelsey and get you a number on that.
So, if we had done nothing at all, the tax is essentially equal?
I don't think that's Council Milk's question, right? I, I think it's clear here that it, because of the increase, or I guess I'd say a different way, because you didn't, by making the adjustment for the certified ratio, you didn't lose the homestead value on the taxpayer, so it basically came out net. But I think, and I agree with Council Milk, what, if, if this hadn't been done, what would have been the loss in revenue to the city from the bedding reimbursement, and what would have been the total loss to the taxpayers for the, for the decrease in the homestead exemption that they'd be able to claim? I think that's what he asked.
Yes. And in addition, this is the perfect scenario, the $250,000 house. A $500,000 house is not going to look like this.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I said, the higher-priced house is going to be different.
Correct. And if, am I, if I'm correct, if it's a $200,000 assessed house, are their taxes going to go down?
Yes.
Well, compared, compared to what it would have been, yes.
Not compared to last year's tax. It's still going up. Everybody's going up.
Correct.
This is only a comparison between doing nothing and doing something. But either way, the taxpayer, no matter what the value of their property is, they are going to see an increase in their taxes.
Correct, because we raised taxes. Correct. So, this, in this situation, it's only going up, it's going up additionally the 10% thereabouts that council and school department raised taxes, right? Added together?
5.9 combined.
Combined?
My recollection is 5.9 combined.
So, 6% combined, right, okay.
Other questions from the council?
So, I have a few questions. Do you have a chart, or can you make one available to us that shows what the, well, I guess, let me back up. In each class, when you applied a market adjustment, you applied a percentage across that whole class, correct, not to individual?
Correct.
So, can you provide us a chart that shows the, all of the classes, and I'm assuming some had zero increase and some had an increase? Is that right?
Correct.
So, in effect, just so, so we'll understand this, this is similar to the past. I, I understand these market adjustments have to be made for, for equitability. But for those, in effect, these classes that had a market adjustment, the residential, single-family residential, mixed-use residential, multifamily, and vacant lots, in effect, they had more of a tax increase, and the other ones like commercial ag that perhaps did not have an adjustment had less of a tax increase because there was no market rate adjustment applied to them, correct?
Correct.
So, I think it would be helpful if you could provide the council, I don't, I'm assuming you don't have this with you tonight?
I do, actually.
Oh, if you do, that would be fine, if you could provide that, and then the city manager could circulate it to us, because we're going to be getting questions about this. We did the last time. So, it'd be handy to know where those market rate adjustments were applied by class and in what percentage.
Actually, I misspoke. I, I thought I had a, an easy way to get to it, but I, I'd fumble around looking for it, so.
Yeah, so if you could, if you could prepare that, and the city manager could circulate that to us, it would be, that would be good. I'm also assuming, but I want to validate this, that by, by making these market rate adjustments, not just this year, but in the last several years, it will have some positive effect on the revaluation because the changes in valuation are likely to be less dramatic and, and not as broad as if this hadn't been done, right? I, I realize that if you take single-family, because that's mostly who calls us all, but if you take single-family residential, you know, the typical thing that you'd expect in reevaluation, some are going to go up, some are going to go down, some will stay the same, will still happen, but the, the extent of the change is going to be less. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And in fact, you know, as we, one of the reasons we want to do a revaluation is to get everyone to 100%, including those classes that are difficult to prove where they're at, because we don't have enough data. We're doing a more in-depth look at the components, the individual components of those assessments. So, we're getting it right. So, you know, it raises all boats, if you will, and it, and it should improve that equity even more than we're doing with the market adjustments. But you're absolutely right. There's less of a cliff to jump off from, or jump over, I guess, in, in this case, because it won't be quite as, as big a shock. We have some communities in Maine that their ratios are down to 50%. When those revaluations hit those communities, they're, they're in for a big shock.
Yeah, one of the common concerns I've heard in the past, is example, is no market rate adjustment for commercial properties, but single families. And I think we understand from the prior workshops that that's because of the sales, the availability of sales data allows you to have the data to make the single market adjustments, but it's much more difficult on commercial properties. And, and to your point, that will get trued up in a more equitable way when we do the reevaluation, because we won't be relying just on the sales data from the commercial properties, correct?
Correct.
Other questions from the council? Council, Council?
Just a quick follow-up in terms of the chart and, and what was adjusted this year? I would appreciate having that record for the last few years.
We've, we've only made market adjustments past three year, well, this will be the third year that we've made market adjustments, and certainly we can prepare that.
Council Milk?
And I'd, I'd add, I guess it's a comment. We've got 20,000 acres of ag land that would be highly valuable if it wasn't zoned ag. And so, all this revale, ag land's not being reevaluated. So, all the people that own that are, that, that value is being pushed, those tax increases are being pushed on people that don't have ag land, and that, so, there is a cost to people for maintaining 20,000 acres of ag land, that we're, not all is ag land, in fact, majority of it's not ag land. So, we're, it's a de facto national park.
Yeah, just to clarify that, if I might, my understanding is that we're not, when there is a reevaluation, the agricultural class will be reevaluated, as will all the classes, correct?
Everything will be reevaluated. We did adjust ag land last year, vacant ag land. We did increase the price per acre on vacant ag land last year. But you are, everything will get revalued, whether it's vacant, whatever zone it's in, whatever area of the city, all parcels. The only thing that the revale company is not contracted for because it was not in their proposal is personal property. So, we will have to contract out someone to do our personal property. But yes, you are correct, everything will get revalued.
And the, the market rate adjustment for ag land last year was due to the significant increase in the sales price that you were seeing in ag land, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I think Council Milk's point is, is correct in that, in general sense, vacant ag land is valued less than something that says in rural residential or suburban residential, but it's not static. It's price.
Correct.
Will go up based on sales data and the revaluation.
Yes.
I just want to make the point that this revaluation is going to take three years to do, and in the interim, there are still going to be, if we see the same data that we're seeing now, it, we very well could be making adjustments in that time that the revale is being done.
Other questions from the council? Council Platte?
Out of curiosity, how many years would it take to, sorry, what's the term? We're going through a reevaluation next year. What market, market rate adjustments is what is happening this year, right? How many years would it take to do a market rate adjustment for all classes?
Well, the revale will accomplish that.
Yes, I understand that.
It's equalization. So, it, I mean, it really depends on what the, the data tells us. I mean, we could see a decline in the market, and we might back off.
Let me rephrase that question. In, if, this is the third year of market adjustment. In the last three years, what percentage of classes have been readjusted? Have we readjusted 100% of the properties over three years? Have we done 10%, 20%, 50%? Does that, does that make sense?
Not, not every class is required an adjustment?
No.
And, and based on the data that we have, we can't support additional adjustments on, say, large industrials, if you will. So, those, those are unadjusted classes, and we have no market evidence to adjust them. But again, when, when we, when we do the revale, a full equalization, we're going to put a fine point on, you know, the components, the individual components of those assessments.
It would be safe to say that we've done pretty much every other class of properties other than the commercials.
And again, to distill that question even further, I'm just curious, roughly, what percentage of this city has been affected by market rate adjustments? That's kind of the, that's the impetus of the question.
We have about 9,700 parcels, and 5,000 of them have been, you know, are like, single-family, market, multi-family. So, we've adjusted some of these more than once. So, so, you know, we've, we've adjusted probably 75% and some of them twice over. Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, why didn't we do ag land this year?
Frankly, we had too much going on, honestly. I, because we had all the other adjustments that we were trying to do sales ratio studies on that were quite in-depth, and we were trying to determine the effect on the taxpayers so that we didn't hit the same taxpayers over and over and over. And if we had had time, there probably would have been an adjustment on the ag land.
But we're hitting the same taxpayers again and again and again.
That's, we have so much data, and we're so far below on the residential sales and the multifamily sales. That's where we are the lowest in our sales ratios, so that's where we had to concentrate first.
So, is it fair to say that the decision by the department in which classes to spend the time to do the market rate adjustment was based on those which had the greatest apparent increase in value based on market data, market sales data?
And based on the ratios, absolutely.
And to follow up on Council Milk's point, if, if it wasn't done this year because it was lower down on the list, is it possible that ag will have a market rate adjustment next year, and some of the classes that weren't, were adjusted this year might not end up being adjusted next year?
That is very possible, maybe even likely, yeah.
I mean, the reason we don't have an industri, the reason that we can adjust home values as fast as we do is because that's where all the data is. It's, that's the data. We haven't, there very well may be increased value in industrial, but we haven't looked.
Well, I'm not sure they.
We've looked, we just don't have the data.
Yeah.
We've definitely looked. We don't have the sales to support it at this time.
Or the sales we do have support the ratio where they're at.
And thus, the importance of a periodic reevaluation, because we may find out when we go through this, when we're looking at more data than just the sales data, that the industrial needs to be increased. Maybe it's where it is is an equitable valuation, or it may be decreased. We won't know till we do the valuation, but.
Correct.
And I think that's, to Joe's earlier point, why just relying on market rate adjustments or not even doing market rate adjustments, like some cities and towns in Maine do, is really problematic, because everything gets unbalanced between the classes.
Yeah, and, and it's worth pointing out that the, the market adjustments of recent are due to kind of an unprecedented market that we've had. And we, we enjoyed a period where we could declare 100% value overall, you know, for, for better than a decade. I mean, and that's, that's, that was common across the state. The, the pictures changed, and the, what, the data that we're looking at is constantly evolving. And when you talk about commercial properties, even within, you know, the retail sector, you have a high amount of variability. We see higher prices, higher sale prices for restaurants, say, compared to your, you know, your mom-and-pop grocery store or things like that. So, where you have the sales, you have a high amount of variability, and it's really difficult to kind of parse that out. But we, we are looking, and we analyze all of it every year.
Council White?
Just wanted to comment that I think the, having a revaluation is almost like having an audit, and the fact that we've been doing these, these little mini revaluations makes the audit easy, easier for the, the company, and arguably, looking at the competition, we weren't expecting that we'd see four companies. And so, it may be they're looking at Auburn saying, that's going to be an easier place to do our revaluation, and maybe that's even reflected in cost, I hope. But, but certainly, I, I think it's a good thing that we're proceeding the way we have been proceeding.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Manager?
Just a couple of things, I think. One, thanks to Karen and Joe and the team for their work, and I think as, as was stated, you know, we are running shorthanded in that office, and I think that if we had the additional personnel, and we did make that decision to hold off, but some of that extra work, we could certainly move forward with. I think that, you know, as we, this will gear up just about right for us to make sure that we have that fourth person in that office when we start the revale, because even though you contract and you outsource, there's a lot of legwork that's done by the team. It's not all, we just don't push it all off onto a vendor, and they do all that work. There's a lot of work that's done in-house to make that process smooth. And to Councilor Platt's question, so the new city valuation will be $2,460,446,182, which is an 8% increase over last year's city valuation.
That includes the increases that they raised.
That includes, it includes the, yeah, so you take those three variables, right? One, the market adjustment, two, the lost value that we received, and then also the new value that we brought in. Yeah. Okay.
Personal properties in that as well. Yes, yeah.
2.6 billion?
2.46.
2.4.
And, Mr. Manager, as, as the team proceeds here with the reevaluation, I think it would be helpful prior to the public engagement, if we could have a workshop so that the council is updated on what the public engagement process will be. Because I'm sure everyone's going to be getting plenty of phone calls. And it'd be nice to be able to have the information to provide people about how to engage in the process as it rolls.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. Karen and I met recently to talk about the process. We're having conversations with the communications and engagement office. And so, and we'll also be working with the vendor to come up with a, a strong plan on implementation, not only presentations to you as a council, but also public presentations. So, so it'll be a full plan that'll be laid out for us. And as, just as a note, too, we're, we're ahead of schedule. We really anticipated any vendor that was going to bid on this would have told us, you're probably not going to be able to start till 2025. The vendors are, were available to start this fall. So, so we're a little ahead of schedule. So, we'll be ramping up our communications effort. Now that they've settled on a vendor, we'll start, we'll start that process, absolutely.
Anything else from the council on this item? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item will be discussion of the opioid revenue funds.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. This is just to give you an update on where we're at. I've had a few inquiries regarding our opioid funds. Just so that you know, this is, this probably goes back probably almost 10 years is when the original information regarding whether or not Auburn would sign on to start going towards the independent movement from municipalities for the opioid funds. And so, the lawsuits that have come out, we are independent in that. We have a, we have a collaboration of other municipalities that are with us. We have, we have a local attorney that is the state representative. And then, we also have attorney that's actually out of New York that has been working for a group of municipalities here in, in Maine. We are not part of the state's initiative on that. The states, we've, we've actually negotiated with the state for the state's share of those funds to come to the local municipalities. However, a lot of this is a pass-through to the state and then to us. But our, our team has been negotiating through this. We actually received notification last week that there's now another grouping of lawsuits that will be moving forward with probably close to 20, I think around 20 different pharmaceutical companies that will be part of a new tranche of lawsuits that will be evaluated. The information I'm giving you now are the, the opioid settlement funds that have been determined. These are locked in. This is what we'll be receiving because of the, the settlement that had taken place. So, if you look at what Auburn has received, we, our first initial payments to Auburn was in 2022. We received just over $211,000. 2023, we received just 42, just over 42,000. And then FY '25, four years to date, we received 186, just over 186,000. So, currently, in Auburn's account, we have $440,338. So, that's where we currently sit.
And the 2024 payments, it's, they're not annual payments. They all come in at different times. So, every month, some comes in and so, we're expecting round numbers, another 150 to 200,000 in 2024?
2024, yeah. And so, you're right. It's, you know, we're, we're uncertain when they're going to hit. It's, and we're uncertain of the amounts. So, and some of that is as a result of numerous different vendors. Say Walmart, for example, they may be on a certain payment process to the state. And so, when those come in, then we receive our percentage of those funds. This slide is talking about the, what we'll see for projected funds. So, so as, as I said, year-to-date, currently, we're at 440,000. What we'll receive between the remainder of this year and 2038? 2038 is the last payment of this settlement. And so, we'll receive another 1.3 million is what we're anticipating. And so, our total settlement is 1,744,000. That's locked in. That's exactly what we'll be receiving. There should, there'll be no modifications to that. What I wanted to share with, with you is that if we take a look at the 1.7 million and how does, you know, what does that do for us as a city? I think it's really important to take a look and determine what, what do we really have for resources county-wide? Because if we want some real lasting impacts as it pertains to the opioid issue, then I think we need to do it as a regional approach. And so, so Andersgagen County will receive 1.1 million, just over 1.1 million during the same time period. The City of Lewiston is receiving 2.8 billion. So, county-wide, including Auburn, those are the three entities that are receiving funds in Andersgagen County, will receive just under 5.8 million dollars. 5.8 million dollars will have a lasting impact if we were able to collaborate and really determine what efforts do we want to put in to try to push back this opioid epidemic? How do we really focus on the initiatives, priority guidelines that the state had settled on and the national approaches to how do you spend those dollars? And so, really, they broke it out into these five, five principles. And that's spend money to save lives, use evidence to guide your spending, invest in youth prevention, focus on racial equity, and transparent process for spending. These are things that we should be aligning when we take a look at, how do we spend these dollars moving forward? Think that money well-spent is going to be on prevention. And if we take a look at what we can do here as a community, this should be the area that we're focusing on. Now, that, now that the money is coming in, now is the time to start talking about what does that look like for us? How does that impact us for a youth approach to evidence-based initiatives that are going to address this issue? And a lot of that, that has to do with workforce, that has to do with housing, that has to do with education. There will be, we have to think about how does our funds, how do our funds align with what the state will be doing with their funds? Because this is only a, a percentage. The state received additional funds that they will be looking to apply some, and a portion of that, and they've broken it out, whether it's by education, prevention, they've broken out their funds. But this is the, the main's opioid settlement priorities, and that's prevention, treatment, recovery, and harm reduction. And so, as we think about initiatives that we need to be working on as a municipality, I think, one, we take a look at how can we do it regionally so that we have a lasting impact in our neighborhoods? How do we really focus on early prevention? And how do we able to move our youth into a sustainable living option, especially as it pertains to housing? Those are areas where we're seeing our biggest impact. And you've seen that in some of our other presentations with some of the other work that we've done. So, tonight is just to let you know, these funds are coming in. What we have done is we have allocated in the budget for the last two years, money to go to Project Support You. And about $65,000 has been in that account. We've yet to draw down those funds because of grant funds that we've received. So, we've received enough grant funds that we haven't had to tap into that. I don't think we're going to need to tap in in FY '25 either. So, the money that you see that I've presented, that'll be the money that'll be in that account. I don't see us drawing any of those funds down.
Questions? Questions from the council? Council Collins?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Manager. Do you, is there any recommended kind of ratio of, of where dollars should go? I fully support the, you know, focusing on prevention. It has the biggest return on investment. But looking at the, the, the worst outcome of deaths due to drug overdoses, the, the increases are in, on our older populations, in our, from 25 and older. And so, I wonder if there's been any guidance from, through Maine in terms of, should there be a ratio of prevention and harm reduction? And I think you mentioned also prevention through other things like stable housing and stability. So, didn't know if there was anything out there.
Yeah. So, the, it's a really good question. And as the manager pointed out, there's three entities in Andersgagen County are getting the money. There's only 39 entities throughout Maine, the state and 39 county or municipal entities are getting the money. I think lots of other communities have these same kinds of questions. The state just allocated a portion of their money last week to create a resource center to support and help guide the 39 recipients of the funds that are not, not the state entity. So, they're, they're just getting up and going, but I think they'll be a good resource to help us focus on what the evidence-based practices are and what areas we think that we can have the most impact on.
I think it's important, too, that we take a look at, the state has broken up their percentages. This is how much they're allocating to these different initiatives. But I think for, for us, because of the dollar amount that we're talking about, I think it's really important that we put those dollars towards a, a real concentrated effort. If we spread that out, we're gonna, we're gonna sprinkle some of our efforts, right? It's going to be a little bit here, a little bit there. I think we, we lean on the state and, and we really lean on the state to bring those dollars into this region as well. So, it's a force multiplier for us. But yet, we leverage our dollars to a, a, a bigger impact. I think it's probably our best solution.
Right, sort of round numbers, about 50% of the settlement money went to the state programmatically. There was admin costs and so forth. Auburn, Lewiston, and Andersgagen County combined are about 7% of the settlement funds. So, as the manager's pointing out, there's a big difference between you're getting 7% and you're getting 50% in what you might be able to accomplish with that.
Other questions from the council? Yeah, Council Milks?
I'm drawing a blank on the name of the program that we're working with the police department. Is it, it's not PACE.
Project Support You.
Right. That, and that-
That's why.
There's, that, it's, it's our experimental program that we're outreach. And they came in and presented some really impressive numbers about the reductions in multiple repetitive calls to the same, to the same people. And I would, that's where I would, it's been very effective. And again, I'm drawing a blank on, on the name of it and I apologize.
Yeah, I think you're talking about Project Support You.
Yeah.
So, that's, we have, we've worked with Tri-County and now East Spur Wink.
Yes, and we have budgeted some money to it.
That's right.
And there's a position that we budgeted to, or maybe even to.
To, yeah. So, yeah, that's, that is, you know, like any other program, it's, you know, you've got these starts and you've got these stops. You know, this is what's happening with turnover of individuals when we're leaning on an outside entity. And so, we're kind of working through that. We're having conversations in-house about how can we make that a little more consistent for us? Because now, then you're training somebody up, getting them associated with the law enforcement as well as EMS personnel. And then, it's, so it's a bit of a challenge. There are some models out there where the communities have said, we're going to stand up our own response team. And calls that come in through dispatch go directly to that response team. That response team goes directly to the call. It's not a law enforcement call, it's not an EMS call, it's this special team response. So, that way there, not every one of these calls should be a police response. It's, it's trained personnel that can go out and deal with these issues, not just some of our opioid issues, but also our mental health issues.
And my, I mean, ballpark numbers, it's 90,000 a year, thereabouts, for the next 14 years, that budget-wise, we could kind of figure.
Yeah. Auburn, you're right. Auburn shares are plus or minus 100,000. And county-wide, it's about 363,000 with, with the current settlements. But I would point out, as the manager said, this, there's an expectation that we'll be getting funding beyond this because there's, A, there's this new set of defendants and also the largest, far and away, the largest potential settlement is with Sacklers. And the Supreme Court just overturned that agreement because they were given some limitation of liability. So, that's going to go back through. So, I, I think those numbers you have are correct, but I think they're going to be going up over the next few years. Council Wyden?
I, I'm wondering if this might be an opportune time to rejoin the Lewiston-Auburn Public Health Committee? My understanding is that the City of Auburn dropped out of that joint effort a few years ago. I'm not sure exactly when or why. I'm outgoing co-chair of Healthy Andersgagen. Council Collins was a very, much more qualified chairperson of Healthy Andersgagen before I was. He works in the field, so you have a good reason for it. But I just think we're missing something. And with all this money coming, I think working with Lewiston and the county, like Phil said, is, is a, a good way to proceed.
Yeah, we, we do have, we do have a staff person that's in those meetings. So, we, even though, yes, Auburn at some point made that decision, we still kept somebody at the table. And so, so, yeah, I think that, that's a good approach. I, I can tell you, we probably receive every couple of weeks, somebody that is willing to, an organization that's willing to come in and help us spend these funds. We get that on a regular basis. So, and, you know, and then we politely say, you know, we're, we're going to be working as a community, determine what is our best approach and what'll be a lasting impact. These are, you know, I really look at, you know, this is legacy stuff, right? This is stuff that you can really say, how can we transform our community in a way that's going to have a lasting impact for generations? This allows you to put that seed money in place to now be able to build upon in the future. And so, that should be our goal. I think that's an opportunity for us to have those conversations. And I really see it as more of a regional goal.
Council Collins?
Two comments. One is, this settlement process was, I think, modeled after the tobacco settlement process. It went through many, many years back. And Maine was most, one of the most successful at reducing tobacco, the burden of tobacco, getting people who were, we had some of the highest rates in getting people from, who were addicted off of tobacco, as well as our prevention. So, I think we have a good track record to look at what we've done from there, what's similar, what's different in terms of opioids. And, and so, you know, I think that's great. The second piece is, this year is when all the health systems in the state are doing a federally required community health needs assessment process. We're gathering the data, we're having community forums in the fall, and, and plans will be in place. Guarantee you that behavioral health and opioids is going to be a major issue that's identified in the, in that process. But it's, what it is, it's an opportunity for us to, in addition to the Public Health Council in the region, is to say, hey, health systems, we're, this is what we're thinking of. How would that complement what you're planning to do? So, it's another, another partner to make sure we're playing with at the right time.
I, I think you're, you're spot-on with the tobacco settlement. So, I mean, if you go back, Healthy Andersgagen was tobacco-free LA as a result of those funds that came through. Healthy Andersgagen has been able to now expand, not only was it tobacco efforts, but then also the alcohol efforts to try to reduce access of alcohol to minors. So, Healthy Andersgagen has taken on a lot of different initiatives over that. But it was that seed money from that tobacco settlement that allowed that to take place. So, I think that's a great example.
Council Milks?
No, the thought, if this is money that we're, it's on the books, and maybe Council Platts can, there's a time value of money? And is there any value in getting that money on the front end? If we know that we can pay off, say, could we bond to get the money on the front end versus pay it off?
I was thinking a similar thing. Use those annual payments as debt payment on a, you know, who knows? But it's certainly a financial tool you could look at.
Other, Councilor Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also thinking that maybe we should put a little bit of money to fill in the gaps between different programs that are, that are currently set up and potentially going to be set- up and potentially gonna be set up across the board, whether it's us locally, or if we do the county, or even the whole three-prong approach. Because I don't want to let, like, some of our homeless people that could use benefit of a little bit extra money in the programs that they're enrolled in, in order to come clean and become more self-sustaining.
Other questions or comments from the council? So a question for the council, is there any opposition to the manager approaching the Lewiston city administrator and the county administrator to inquire about the Lewiston and the county's interest in some collaborative approach in the use of the funds? So Mr., so Mr. Manager, can you speak to both entities and then report back to the council on, on what the, the county and the city of Lewiston's thoughts would be on a collaborative approach?
Absolutely. Yep. Thanks.
Anything else on this item from the council? Great. Thank you very much. The next item is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405-6C to discuss an economic development matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to move.
Move by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Whitey. All in favor? Opposed? The council will be in executive session.
July fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Auburn City Council will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary on the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm an Auburn City Councilor at large, and welcome.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor.
Hello. Tim Cowan, Ward Two City Councilor.
Steve Milks, Ward Three City Council.
Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, Ward Four City Councilor.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Ward Five Councilor.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Anaya Eggy, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is consent items. There's no consent items tonight, so we'll move on to minutes. Are there any errors or corrections in the minutes? I would point out a number of corrections under item eleven, which was order eighty-nine zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. There's a spelling error in the word motion, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight corrections, either corrections to the names or completions of the names. And on item twelve, excuse me, item roman numeral seven in the open session, there's one name that was completed. I've provided a corrected copy to the clerks. Is there a motion to adopt the minute's amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Milks, seconded by Council Walker. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted. Under Communications and Presentations, we have the official results of the July ninth, twenty twenty four, special election to fill an at-large school committee seat. The vote tally as provided by the clerk was Cassidy Weisner, thirteen, Thomas Lejoudis, one thirty-six, and Olivia Rich was elected to fill the at-large seat with two hundred and sixty-seven votes. We'll now move on to our first open session of the evening. If there's members of the public that would like to address the council on any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close the open session and move on to unfinished business. The first item is Ordinance eleven zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. A city council initiated text amendment to Chapter sixty, Article thirteen, Division two, phosphorus control. The proposed amendments pertain to septic system installation, maintenance, and replacements, and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. This will be a public hearing and a second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Council Whiting. Before we move to the public hearing, I remind the council, this was the item that was amended, and the amendment was adopted at the first reading at the prior council meeting. Now open the public hearing on this item. Any member of the public that would like to address the council relative to this agenda item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Very quickly, Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. The amendment that was adopted at the last meeting and the other subsequent amendments to the ordinances as proposed last time all seem fine to me, so I won't get up again. I think they're all fine as amended. Thank you.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platt?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item is Ordinance twelve zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. A city council initiated text amendment to Chapter sixty, Article four, Division three, low-density country residential district. The proposed amendments pertain to, excuse me, pertain to septic system installation, maintenance, and replacements, and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. This will be for a public hearing and second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Cowan. Before we move to, excuse me, we'll now open the public hearing on this. Any member of the public who would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item is Ordinance thirteen zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. A city council initiated text amendment to Chapter sixty, Article twelve, Division four, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District. The proposed amendments pertain to systems, excuse me, septic system installation, maintenance, and replacements, and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to zoning ordinance or zoning map. This will be for a public hearing and a second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to move, yes.
Moved by Council Weisner, seconded by Councilor Walker. We'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Ordinance fourteen zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. Consider adopting a Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District septic systems inspection map. This map will be referred to in Chapter sixty, Article twelve, Division four, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and will be considered in accordance with Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance and zoning maps. This will be for a public hearing and a second reading. Remind the council that this was amended and passed as amended at the first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Cowan. We'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Ordinance fifteen zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. Consider adopting the official Lake Auburn Overlay District four-hundred-foot setback to Lake Stream and Brook for subsurface wastewater fields map. This map will be referenced in Chapter sixty, Article twelve, Division four, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and will be considered in accordance with Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to zoning ordinance or zoning map. This is for a public hearing and a second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Cowan, seconded by Council Whiting. We'll open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary? Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Ordinance sixteen zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. The city council initiated a zoning text amendment to Chapter sixty, Division two, site plan review, pursuant to Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. This will be for public hearing and a second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Whiting. We'll open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council. Is council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Ordinance seventeen zero seven zero one, twenty twenty four. Consider a zoning map amendment to convert city assessors' parcel IDs two zero one dash zero three four and two zero nine dash zero three five with addresses of five twenty-six and five fifty Minut Avenue from T four point two B, traditional neighborhood development zoning district, to general business two zoning district. The city council introduced this proposal in accordance with Chapter sixty, Article seventeen, Division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Cowan. We'll open the public hearing on this item. If any member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council. Council Whiting.
Just a quick comment. One of the members of the public at the last meeting raised the issue of this being spot zoning. I disagree with that assessment. The parcels being rezoned are adjacent to GB, and it's consistent with, you know, standards that you have in rezoning parcels such as this. And it's obviously necessary to achieve the fire and police department project, which will happen in a couple of years.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Platt?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order ninety-one zero seven fifteen twenty twenty four, appointing an MMA Legislative Policy Committee representative. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we nominate Mayor Harmon to serve in this position.
Is there a second?
Oh, second it.
Seconded by Council Gary. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Council Whiting. So we do have a direct appointment on LPC that is separate from this appointment. So we do have a, we have a seat that's just for Auburn that we will move forward with. We have been putting another name in on this over the past few years. Matt Garside from Poland, the way that the votes work on this, has been the one that has been representing Anderson County, or our district, rather, that we share with Poland and Gloucester. And so, and there might be one other community in there as well, but it's definitely Poland and Gloucester.
Right.
So Matt represents Anderson County. It's up to the council on whether or not you want to make a motion for one of those two candidates. But we, we will have a direct seat. And then I believe Mayor Harmon will most likely, he did last year, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm assuming Mayor Harmon would do that again.
And does that require action of the council?
That does not, that, that will require action on the council after the election's done. So this, this election of votes has to happen this way. Your direct appointments will take place later on, probably in August, I think, is when that's done.
Would withdraw my motion, and others can make a motion.
Is there, is there a motion?
Withdraw my second.
Is there a motion relative to continuing the support of Mr. Garside, the city manager in Poland?
Yeah, I make a motion. So moved.
A second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Council Weisner, seconded by Council Walker. Is there discussion by the council? Council Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment that, you know, having looking, looked at the profiles, I thought Mr. Garside provided more years of experience, especially within Maine, would, was a slightly better candidate. Hearing that he's also been representing us already, I think is even stronger, so in support of this motion.
Yeah, and I can tell the council that when I started on the policy, Legislative Policy Committee in December.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order ninety one zero seven fifteen twenty twenty four, appointing an MMA Legislative Policy Committee representative. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we nominate Mayor Harmon to serve in this position.
Is there a second?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Gary. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Council Whiting. So we do have a direct appointment on LPC that is separate from this appointment. So we do have a, we have a seat that's just for Auburn that we will move forward with. We have been putting another name in on this over the past few years. Matt Garside from Poland, the way that the votes work on this, has been the one that has been representing Anderson County, or our district, rather, that we share with Poland and Gloucester. And so, and there might be one other community in there as well, but it's definitely Poland and Gloucester.
Right.
So Matt represents Anderson County. It's up to the council on whether or not you want to make a motion for one of those two candidates, but we, we will have a direct seat. And then I believe Mayor Harmon will most likely, he did last year, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm assuming Mayor Harmon would do that again.
And does that require action of the council?
That does not, that, that will require action on the council after the election's done. So this, this election of votes has to happen this way. Your direct appointments will take place later on, probably in August, I think, is when that's done.
Would withdraw my motion, and others can make a motion.
Is there, is there a motion?
Withdraw my second.
Is there a motion relative to continuing the support of Mr. Garside, the city manager in Poland?
Yeah, I make a motion. So moved.
Second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Council Weisner, seconded by Council Walker. Is there discussion by the council? Council Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a comment that, you know, having looking, looked at the profiles, I, I thought Mr. Garside provided more years of experience, especially within Maine, would, was a slightly better candidate. Hearing that, he's also been representing us already, I think is even stronger, so in support of this motion.
Yeah, and I, I can tell the council that when I started on the policy, Legislative Policy Committee in December, he was very active in participating in the process. Further questions or comments by the council? Councilor?
Just, just a comment that Mr. Garside, in my brief interactions with him at the airport board, was a very good member there and conscientious, you know, well-qualified person.
Anything further from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. Any member of the public that would like to address the council relative to city business for items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the open, seeing none, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to reports. For the mayor's report, just two items. I wanted to thank staff for the preparation for the Philbrick Square dedication on the seventh. Was well attended. It was a very emotional and fitting dedication to Officer Philbrick. And I wanted to thank, again, the staff, the contractors, and all the participants, including a number of members of the council that attended the PAL Center groundbreaking on the twelfth. We'll all get to watch the building go up here over the next year, and in September twenty twenty five, we'll get together to celebrate again with the grand opening. That's all I have tonight. City council reports, we'll start with Council Gary.
I'm bowing to my council chair.
Council Whiting?
Just want to comment on the Absolutely Auburn Podcast. I, I happened to listen to the one with Dave Griswold and Jane Coslow. And it was very informative. These things are, are, you know, entertaining, but I learned that the biggest spruce tree in the state of Maine is in New Auburn. And I also learned about invasive species, which I've witnessed on my own property, and, and hearing that sort of energized me to get out there and start cutting the vines before they become woody and impossible to remove. Thank you to Jen and staff for doing those.
Council Cowan?
Now I'm going to have to listen. Thank you. Just a couple items. I, I did too enjoy the ceremonies. Mr. Mayor mentioned the Philbrick Memorial. If you haven't yet seen it, I encourage folks to go by. It's a, it's a really nice commemoration. And the PAL Center, what an exciting, and such a huge, huge jewel for the city of Auburn. So shout out to the manager for, for your vision on getting that started many years ago. And then, as Council Gary suggested, mentioned, the ad hoc, mayor's ad hoc committee on homelessness met last Thursday. We're continuing to work on just some information and recommendations for the city council to, to review in terms of roles that the city can play and the scope of the, the issue and what others are doing. So we'll continue to work on that and looking forward to providing that information for you all and to the public.
Council Milks?
It was a great ceremony at the PAL Center, and it's, it's very exciting, so, but that's all I have.
Council Weisner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just reiterate, I was able to attend the PAL Center, so that was a great, great morning together with the rest of the councils, the mayor, and dignitaries there to, to start that groundbreaking. I'm looking forward to the grand opening when it's, the building's finished. Mr. Mayor, I know last, last meeting, you spoke about the nine-one-one consolidation and, and spoke about, I believe it's an informal committee. I was wondering if you can give us some more details on when the meetings are happening or some of the people that are on this committee, so that way the public knows more what's going on for that, so the public's more involved, because I know the, if nine-one-one consolidation is to move forward, that would be a, you know, there's individuals on the nine-one-one that work there that are wondering what's going to happen there and what's going to happen with the services for the cities as well. That's concerning to some citizens. Thank you.
Sure. So that, so the membership of that ad hoc group are from Auburn, myself and the city manager from Lewiston, the acting city administrator and the Lewiston mayor, from the county commissioner Lewis, and the new county administrator, and the sheriff was the acting administrator, and he's going to continue on with the group. The group is going to meet again this Thursday at four o'clock to discuss some questions posed by the commissioners. So what happened at this point is that the ad hoc group proposed some various models for governance and funding, believing that unless the three legislative bodies, the Auburn City Council, the Lewiston City Council, and the county commissioners can come to agreement on a governance structure and funding, that drilling down into all of the operational issues is not really of value until we see if the legislative bodies are on board. The governance model that was suggested was a new department under the county commissioners. Thus, I made a presentation with a city manager two months ago or so now. The Anderson County Commissioners have had a couple of work sessions, and they posed some questions back to the ad hoc group. We're going to discuss those Thursday and respond back to the commissioners. Once we get some feedback from the commissioners relative to their thoughts on these proposals, we'll schedule a work session and go over that with the city council in detail. And my understanding and talking to the acting city administrator and the mayor in Lewiston is that they'll do the same to see if the three entities have some understanding. There's been no formal action taken yet. I would not anticipate this ad hoc committee taking any formal action if the three legislative bodies seem to be in agreement on some path forward. I would expect a wider group to be formed to bring more expertise to the table relative to the operational issues related to the nine-one-one centers.
Just one further question. Where is the location of this meeting this Thursday at four?
The, the. I was just going to say, so the meetings that were being, that are being held currently are not public meetings. They don't meet that requirement. Not to say that, you know, there's, you know, we have meetings that we have with other entities on a regular basis. I know the mayor's using the term ad hoc as he's bringing a group temporarily together to, to really work through the details. The public meeting is the presentation to the county commissioners and the public meeting to the workshop. So I just want to make sure that folks aren't confused that this will be on the city's website, on the calendar, minutes from those meetings. This isn't a public meeting that would require that.
Okay, I, I, I was just wondering, just so that, if people wanted to, like you said, it's not, those that want to go and, and participate and just listen, they can, they can be there, just to hear what's going on.
So we're scheduling that in, in just a, a small bump out room. I don't know if we'd have many that would attend. I did give the Lewiston Auburn Board of, for the nine-one-one center, an update at their, I think it was their last meeting, on the, on the discussions. I just, I understand what you're, what you're saying, Councilor. I just want to make sure it's not, this isn't something that is just open to the public that those conversations are having, unless the mayor directs it that way. But right now, we just would not, we would not have it. If somebody, if somebody came in and said, I want to sit in this meeting, there's nothing, obviously, that we would hide or anything else, to come in and sit on that meeting. So, I mean, it's here, it's here in Auburn Hall, but there's not, there's not necessarily, I'm not booking a large room or an area for the public to come in on, and we're not, we're certainly, it's not, doesn't meet those requirements to record that meeting, anything like that. So I just want to make sure that.
Okay, okay, because I just wanted to make sure and clear, because I just heard informal, so I just didn't know what, what manner is this, under the mayor's powers, or is this something that is just you as a citizen, or how this is kind of working out, just as a transparency for, for everybody, because they're hearing about this? And so I just want to make sure we're just, everybody's clear and understands, like you said, is this under city or no? I just want to make sure everybody's clear transparency-wise, for all parties.
So, so it's not really an official committee. It's really no different than ongoing activities in which there might be discussions between the various governmental entities. The, this group has no authority. They can't take any action. Basically, they're just a work group to provide some ideas to start the conversation. And as an example, we built some financial models. As the manager said, all of that, everything that the group did was provided in a pretty extensive briefing at the county commissioners' meeting, all the documents and the discussion to date. If the, if the council, the majority of the council feels it would be beneficial to have a work session scheduled now, we can do that. The manager and I thought that it would be more productive and a better use of the council's time to hear back from the county, whether they would even be considering this, and, and if they would, under what conditions. And then we'll provide in a public meeting in Auburn all of the information there, so that we can get the council's feedback about whether they think that is an approach that we should proceed with, or if they have some alternatives to, to put before the other bodies.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
You're welcome. Council Walker?
Did you say that the director of nine-one-one is involved in your meetings?
The, the director of nine-one-one is not in the meetings, nor is the director of the county communications or the police or fire chiefs, only because at this point, the discussion is limited to governance structures and budgetary models. And as we presented to the county commissioners, if the three legislative bodies come to some understanding of how they might proceed from governance and budget issues, then they will need to form an actual committee that's larger and includes people from nine-one-one, people from police, fire, emergency medical, so that they can bring their operational expertise to the table as we work through those types of issues.
I, I sat on the nine-one-one board for quite a while, and every time something like this comes up, it has an effect on the people that work there, because it scares them. It makes them wonder, are they going to have a job three months down the road? And I think what it does is it opens up opportunity for them to make a move in a hurry. So we'll be looking for more people to come to work for us, not knowing if they're going to be working for us, or the county, or the state, or whoever it may be. I, I think it would be wise if the director at least is filled in on what your meetings are about. So I, that's just my opinion. And as councilor, I would, I would hope that you could, at least the mayor could, the manager could sit down and say to him exactly what you're really doing here, because we talked about this a little bit, and we didn't really know what you were doing. And saying informal kind of left us out there in the, you know, the, the branches somewheres, because we know what an ad hoc is, but informal, we weren't sure what you were saying.
Sure. And I think the manager's done a very good job in keeping the police chief, the fire chief in Auburn, and the nine-one-one director up to date on what's been going on, and we've answered any questions that they happen to put forth at this point. We're also very clear with them, because I think, Council Walker, you, you raise a very good point about the morale issue. We've been very clear that this is not a near-term thing. Anything that would come out of this would be several years down the road because of the need to coordinate a location with a construction of wherever the center's going to be, whether it would be on Minut Ave, whether it would be at the new sheriff's office, whether it would be someplace else. So I think the manager's tried to allay those concerns. I, I understand it's human nature, but we'll continue to try to keep them informed and answer any questions they might have.
Thank you for that. All right. I, I would just like to make a couple announcements. Neighborhood Watch Meeting is going to be July twenty-fifth, Thursday evening, six o'clock, at the Sixth Street Congregational Church. And the manager has promised that we will have a speaker there from the Auburn Police Department, other than Mr. Harrington. So I think it'll be great if we can get our neighborhood together, come and listen and ask questions, especially about the community and what has been going on in the last few months. The other one is United New Auburn Association, Tuesday, July thirtieth, six o'clock. The city manager has promised that Dennis Otte, the new assistant manager, will be our speaker that evening at six o'clock. And the last thing I will say, this Wednesday night coming, providing the weather stays nice, like it is right now, we will be across the street at Festival Plaza with the music happening and everything with Milt Simon. We will be there. We will be there with a concession stand at six P.M. Hopefully, we will spring the hot dogs on you this Wednesday night. Music starts approximately seven.
Just, just one inquiry on the behalf of the assistant city manager. Is he required to wear a tie to that meeting, Counselor Walker?
You don't have to wear a tie, Dennis, no.
Thank you.
Counselor Platt?
All right, I've got some exciting news. All right. First off, the school committee just wants to extend congratulations to Olivia Rich, who won the at-large seat. Olivia will be sworn in at the first meeting on August seventh, so they will not be there on Wednesday, but on August seventh. Number two, this was announced at the last school committee meeting, the graduation rate for Edward Little High School in this current year, and it's phenomenal. This year, Edward Little graduated ninety-six point one percent of its seniors, which is up from ninety-two point one percent last year, and during COVID, we bottomed out at seventy-two percent. That was the year before Dr. Brown came to Auburn. And in that time, our grad, and obviously, there's a lot of conflating factors during COVID as to why that was the case, but with a ninety-six point one percent graduation rate, I believe that puts us right up in the top percentiles for the entire state of Maine. So, that's a huge accomplishment for Auburn and, and the Auburn School Department and Edward Little High School, and all the administrators and staff and students, so just wanted to make that public. And lastly, if there could be anything even more exciting than that, another piece of exciting news. Sam Boss, who is the, I guess you can't call him a chair anymore, because it's a working group, but the conservation group used to be a committee, and Sam Boss was the chair. We've been relegated to a working group, but we're still getting some good work done. Sam has been, for the past three years, four years, five years, has been applying for a federal grant to remove the Littlefield Dam and provide recreational opportunities along Taylor Brook. And just last week, the federal agencies confirmed that Auburn, because of Sam and lots of other people who are a part of it, will be receiving three point five million dollars to remove the Littlefield Dam, as well as enhance recreational opportunities in that area. That could be trails, it could be water access, it could be boating access, it could be fishing recreation, it could be programs for students and adults and citizens. So, there's a lot of latitude on what can be done with those funds. I think just as of last week, it was made official. Sam gave me approval to share this today. I think there's some more details forthcoming, and Sam will work with Liz to broadcast this. But it's a huge accomplishment for an individual citizen who is not up here with us, put in a ton of work, and I think in a couple years, you know, we should be very grateful for the group that got this done, but in a couple years, we'll, we'll reap the rewards and we'll see where this gets us. So, great news.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that, that's a great thing, but the city's been working along with them for the past five, six, seven, eight years. So, so even counselors, before many of you came on board, we, we all tried to do a letter to support him and the others that worked with him. I believe Bates College also was part of that working group, so they've done a heck of a job, and I'm glad that part of the river is going to be cleaned up, and I really hope they're going to do something for the fish that go up and down that part of the river.
And I appreciate that context. My context is very short, just the last year or so, so I know there are a lot of people involved with this, so hats off to everybody who was a part of this.
Representative Eggy?
Sounds like a future podcast. Sorry.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple things. One, thank you for your support for Assistant City Manager Dote. I think that many of you know Dennis, he's been with us a long time, but I'm really thrilled about Dennis coming into this office. There's a lot of initiatives that will be moving forward, and Dennis will get started effective immediately, so, so we'll start working towards that. Counselor Platts, thanks for the, the shout-out regarding the Sam Boss and the work that he did, but we did, we will be working with Noah to be able to get the quote from them so that we can put a press release out. Expect that press release in the next week or so. That'll give you a lot more detail, and what a great effort. And Counselor Platts is correct, the initiative from, from Sam Boss has just been tremendous on, on the writing of that grant, as long, as well as our, our own Eric Cousins and the work that he's done, and they partnered up very well to make that initiative happen. So, we're really, really excited about that. The councilors, you've already spoke about the other events that we had this week. Thanks again for coming out for those, showing your support. Appreciate the, the public that came out. Really thrilled that we had such a great turnout from the Filbrick family. We probably had close, just over twenty members probably from the Filbrick family that had come out, and so, and they were very appreciative of the city recognizing Norman in that way, and, and that it was on the anniversary, seventy-fifth anniversary of when that, that incident took place. So, just a great, great response from the community, and I appreciate the mayor traveling probably, I don't know, ten hours back and forth from his vacation to come in on those two events, but we really appreciate his support and being in attendance. Thanks.
Thanks. There's no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Motion to move.
Moved by Counselor Milks, seconded by Counselor Walker. All in favor? Opposed? Counsel will be adjourned.